Most people don't realize this, but most cities do the same thing. That's why they have sewage treatment plants, whether it's the city of Meridian, city of Boise. And they discharge water back into the Boise River, Boise City does, after it's been processed.
Tom, how are you?
Great. How are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Good, good Fourth of July?
Oh, it was fantastic. My poor little guy, I was telling you, my seven year old actually broke his toe on one of the water slide bounce house sinks. So people be careful about that. Yeah, it was the classic, it was the classic like, oh, my gosh, we have to go to the emergency room on a holiday. This is
Worst time.
Yeah, when I was, when I was six, I remember on Christmas day, we went down to the, down to the park right after we opened presents and my uncle, Uncle Dave was, who was awesome and always played with us. He was chasing me on the monkey bars and I, I went for like a double swing and I missed and rotated and broke my arm. So, you know, here my seven year old had to visit the emergency.
Do the same thing.
Yeah.
Good experience and you could, you could relate.
Yeah, yeah, I can empathize and sympathize. You won the primary, congratulations. So now you have the general coming up in November. We, we were talking right at the end of our first conversation about water and that, that's a topic that I haven't thought about a lot or at the time hadn't thought a lot about here because, you know, frankly, we just, Idaho does not beat the drama about being in a drought and, you know, like all kinds of consumer restrictions and residential issues very frequently. But then the water crisis with the Snake Plains Aquifer came up. There was a large conspiracy about cobalt mining and how companies are, you know, stealing all this water. I haven't found any evidence of that. Nobody's been able to provide any, but be that as it may, the conversation about water has, has become more, more dominating in the, in the public conversation. After I spoke with you, I also spoke with a city council person who actually was on his HOA in his community and he said, people were breaking into their pump house, HOA's pump house to turn on the pump. They had agricultural pumping going on for grasses and everything and they, the, the community members were watering so much and like rivers of water going down, going down the sewer drains that they had, they were trying to let the, the aquifer underneath their, their community, their little well, fill back up and people just were freaking out about water. And I realized, again, as you were talking about, water is a really, it's a really important thing that, that we need to consider for a number of reasons in, in Idaho for development, especially Ada County. And so again, I asked you to come back in. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Matt, for having, having me here and talking about water is one of the critical issues. But as, as I talk about water as a commissioner, one of the things that people do, and I was driving over here, going down Eagle Road and, and even here in this community. One of the things most people say is they look around and they say, water? We don't have a water problem. Because everything's green, everything's nice. We have, turn on the spigot, water comes out. So most people don't realize the value, but one person I worked for once used to, used to say it this way. He'd say, when he'd start giving a speech about water, he'd say, in Idaho, he'd say, folks, we live in a desert. And then he'd pause for a minute. By the way, if you hadn't noticed, we live in a desert. And he'd say that like five times. Okay, get your attention. We live in a desert and when our ancestors came here, we were able to, because of the number of people here in the community, both in Boise as well as all of Southern Idaho. And we call it the Southern Idaho Smile. The Snake River goes across Southern Idaho and back to what you were talking about, Snake River Plain Aquifer. So what we did is we did like they did in the east and most places, a lot of places in the world where they have water. The rivers were there, they started using water out of the river. And then as more people came, they started saying, okay, we don't have enough water just in the rivers that's slowing down. And here in Boise, just as an example, we get 12 inches of moisture a year. That's a very low amount of water. So in order to take care of the water, we have to store it some way. There are two ways we can store it. We can store it with dams, which we have here, as most people know, Lucky Peak and Anderson Ranch and our other dams here on the Boise River. And then the other way is we can store water in our underground aquifers, which is nature's way of storing water. And if we, but that's the natural flow into the aquifers are limited. So we have to figure out a way to store water there as well. So water is critically important for us and we know it is, but we don't focus on it. And so individually, we need to focus on it. And that's one of my mantras is empower people, not government. And if we individually can focus on what I can do in my little sphere, and that relates to everyone, whether it's just me and my little half acre parcel of land, or a developer who's developing, like we have developers like Dry Creek and other developers in, in Ada County, or we have industrial users like Micron and Meta. Each one of those component parts have to look at it in the same way. What can I do with the water that I have, that the water I have available that can help not only me and my little sphere that I'm influencing and governing, but for the whole community as at large. So thank you for actually dialoguing on water, helping us as individuals focus on water so that we can, in fact, individually take some action, limited as it may be, or great as it may be. And me as a commissioner, we have to make policy decisions on development. Water is a critically important part of that. So we have to, we have to evaluate the water. And most people, a lot of people actually ask me, didn't you ask your water question? Cause I usually ask a water question whenever, when any kind of a development comes before the commission so that we can find a, fine tune what we're doing with water in relation to all of our development.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com. Well, and again, thank you for, thank you for your focus on it as far as, as far as somebody who looks at developments and development plans and that says yay or nay, that the, the water systems in say developments like Dry Creek Ranch, once those are established and the community is built out, it's exceedingly difficult to change the, the water system and a cost prohibitive naturally, right? Like if you, if you don't have good recapture systems, if you don't have good recycling systems, if you don't have, you know, effective, effective means of making the most of the resource you have, there's no, once, once the entire community is done, it's like, okay, how many millions and millions of dollars would it cost to, to, you know, revamp that? But just let, let's look at Dry Creek Ranch. Okay. Development, obviously north, north of Eagles, just off 55. It's going to be about 1,500 to 2,000 homes. This is an example of a water system that I've been educated on that I think is really, I don't know if state of the art is the right way because I'm not a water expert, but one of those things where you listen to it, you hear about how it's done up and you're like, okay, that makes a lot of sense. That's obviously smart development. That's people taking advantage of and making the most of the resource that they have. Talk to me about how this style of development captures and utilizes water in an effective manner.
Right. Dry Creek is, is a good example of, they, they have a water system. It's an, it's an aquifer, underground aquifer. They get their water out of the ground. That's where they get their water to use and they're not on Veolia Water or other domestic water, major water facility process.
So that's where it starts. Dry Creek Ranch owns a pump, goes underground, pumps water up. And that's the, that's the raw water, the virgin water that we get.
Right. And from there, they, they of course have a sewage treatment facility for the utilization of the water afterwards. They probably reprocess the water and all the, all the water that's used for the areas that are commercial areas, the areas that everybody
Like common spaces.
Common spaces and all of that. And even, even on your own water and your own lawn, that's all done with reprocessed water. And the water is reprocessed within a state of the art reprocessing facility that's monitored by DEQ. They test it on, on a weekly basis so that they know the water quality is coming out and it's being maintained. They use that all, on all the common areas. Then the other thing they do is they have ponds that, that percolate the water back down into the aquifer. So their aquifer is actually being recharged. When I had the opportunity of visiting with the, the North America Director of, of Veolia Water, and they, he was explaining to me that, because they have a worldwide operation in Namibia, which is one of the countries in South Africa, just north of the country of South Africa, the tip of Southern Africa. It's basically a desert and the only thing that keeps them going there is basically they have a lot of diamonds. And so that's why, that's why the world's focused on, on even them in particular. But they have developed a process of reprocessing all their water. So it's a mental thinking of actually how they use their water. When, when they use their water the first time, they know that it's going to be reprocessed and come back and used again. So that's another thing that we need to think about how we, he said, we in the United States need to be thinking about that in terms of just mentally thinking how we're using our water and reprocessing the water and using it again and again and again and again. Cause we do not use all of it as we, as it goes through our systems.
Right. Okay. If, if I wanted to track a gallon, let's, let's follow a gallon of water coming out of the Dry Creek Ranch pump. Okay. So the gallon comes up from the aquifer and goes into, say, my tap, right? So I'm washing dishes or, you know, flushing a toilet or whatever. All of that water goes up through the, through the, through the pump, comes to my house, right? I use it. It gets flushed down a four inch drain. Okay? That four inch drain then goes to a processing facility that sterilizes and it brings it to a level of quality that is tracked by, and you said DEQ? What's DEQ?
Department of Environment Quality.
Great.
Idaho Department.
Great. So DEQ gets that wastewater to, or excuse me, Dry Creek Ranch, as certified by DEQ, gets that wastewater to a level where it can then go either directly to the commercial and, and common spaces for landscaping water usage, or it can be charged back into the aquifer?
Correct.
Okay. So it splits there and there's, there are catch basins that essentially are freeways down back to the aquifer. So all of that water that's already been brought to a high quality, higher, higher quality gets drained down into the aquifer and slowly recharges that. And that has a natural filtration process anyway, obviously, because you're going through sand and you're going through presumably things like charcoal and whatnot. So a portion of it gets recharged directly into the aquifer. And then another portion goes to the common spaces like the grass areas, like at the soccer field. Once it's used in the soccer field, does, do the storm drains do the exact same thing and go back into the aquifer?
Yes, as well as just the percolation from irrigate, the natural irrigation flow goes down into the ground as well. And those are all part of the process. And those are all natural processes. That's, that's the way nature does it as well.
So, so we get, we recharge the aquifer three different ways then. It's directly from the, the water that gets treated into catch basins. It's from the actual irrigation where it will go through a soccer field or a grass and naturally percolate down through the ground. And then through the storm drains, it will go and go through, I presume, some other process and essentially cotton catch basin. So there are three ways we're recharging the soccer for as we're pulling it out.
Right. And, and most people don't realize this, but most cities do the same thing. That's why they have sewage treatment plants, whether it's the city of Meridian, city of Boise. And they discharge water back into the Boise River, Boise City does, after it's been processed. Their major treatments center over by, over by the park in, on the river. It's interesting to go through that facility if you haven't been through it and see their filtration system, et cetera. And Micron, an industrial user, the city of Boise is working with them to increase their ability to, because they, they take water out of the aquifer. They take water out of the river as well as the aquifer. And they have a recharge facility that goes after, again, after it's been reprocessed so that it's clean, recharge back into the aquifer and then they use it again and again and again. Boise just, Boise City just announced the fact that they're building a whole new facility to study that process so that we can understand it better and understand how we do it. Meta is doing the same thing. The water, they, when they bought that piece of property, they bought the water rights, which is the underground water rights. They pump the water out. They're processing it for an industrial use water. Doesn't have to be cleaned to the same level as it does for drinking water. But then they reuse it, recharge it back into the aquifer. They're doing the same thing. Those are the kinds of things we need to be studying. And as a commissioner, that's what we're trying to do. One of the things I started while we, when we, when I came, became a commissioner, again, helping us focus better as a community on water. We did a well study because we have wells that are going dry in Ada County. We have a, a well study and
Hey, you've got like a two, two inch stack of paper here.
Yes, one, one of the, and these, these are all online on our, on our website, on Ada County website, these studies, just as a reference. But one of the things, we have conclusions of our groundwater study. We took central Ada County, did well studies, we identified all the wells, looked at the wells. And just as a, one example, one of the things we found does, from 2015 to 2023, which was the study time, the groundwater level of the wells, shallow wells in that study area were decreasing by a foot, an average of a foot a year in that time period. So we know that's, so how do we address that? We try to figure out a way that we can recharge those aquifers like we were just talking about. So one is getting information so that we can know what's happening and then finding out ways that we can actually recharge. And in conjunction that Hubbard Reservoir, another thing we're studying Hubbard Reservoir out south of, in South Ada County. It's a reservoir that was originally built as a storage area for irrigation, like Lake Lowell is for the canal. But what they found when they started storing water there is it was just seeping into the ground and it wasn't storing it. It was just seeping into the ground. So they use it now basically for getting floodwater in the spring when there's extra water. They put water out there in a reservoir and they know it's going to go into the ground.
So they're using that as essentially a recharge catch basin, which is like, okay, this is not gonna, it's not like a fishbowl. It's just, there's a drain and it's going to drain directly into underground aquifers.
And we don't know exactly what's happening. So as a county, we, we're monitor, we put in monitoring wells, using domestic wells that are already there that people have agreed to let us use to monitor its usage. We've done that for like a year and a, just starting last year. We're going to get a body of information so that it will dovetail with the well water study so that we can understand how aquifers are being recharged in this valley in particular. Cause the geology underground is important, just like the Snake River Plain Aquifer up in, in Eastern Idaho. They've studied it as well to know how, how to take water in and out of that aquifer.
And what the storage capacity is, right? Because you need really specific, like you're saying, geology to make an aquifer, right? Like it's not that just any ground or any kind of, any kind of earth material will store water effectively. So you need, it's like, okay, how much can we store? How much are we losing? Where are we losing it to? A question about the Micron and, and Meta. There was a lot of, there was a big conversation, or excuse me, not a big conversation, but there were rumors and anxieties expressed to me about the nature of the water usage from Meta. That I heard people saying, hey, Meta is going to be using 50,000 gallons a day or, you know, 50 million gallons, some astronomical number of gallons, and it was all going to be toxic water runoff and it was never going to be able to be used. That's roundly inaccurate. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. And I don't know that, I don't know the details even of Dry Creek or some of these things. I just know the 40,000 foot level, but they are, it's my understanding and visiting with them, they are, that's why they, they are actually paying for sewage treatment plant in conjunction with the city of Kuna, so that they can actually monitor that, reprocess their water. This is water that they have the water right to, that they're pulling out of the ground, but they want to be good stewards of that water. So they can reuse it again for their own commercial or business purposes. But also they may actually be able to put water back into the water system for Kuna as well, or put it back into the, into the river, like Boise does after they reprocess their water or other cities do. So it, it's, it's a matter of one, understanding our system and then being able to deal with our system. So waters are a finite resource. It's one we just have to, one, know what we're doing and how we're doing with it. So we make sure we have enough of it. So we're not like the Southwest states who don't have, haven't, haven't thought it through as well as we should.
Right. And again, the, the, I think one of the more unfortunate things is the design of those Southwest cities. They were made years before people were, were water conscious. And the water rights, for instance, from northern and southern portions of, you know, states in the Southwest are really frustrating because again, they're southern portions get rights over water from northern portions, prior to the northern portions getting it. Like it's a huge, huge train wreck. But as Ada County is developing and we're cognizant of, hey, look, this is a finite resource. We have an agricultural economy. Like we need to make sure that we are designing and organizing our, our communities and growth appropriately. You know, hopefully we can stave off some of this. A question for you, if I may, about, you were saying that you, you did a water, water study and you found out that the water was going down, the, the water table is essentially going down by a foot per year because you were having some wells run dry. Could you put that into perspective as far as, okay, it's going down a foot per year and most of our wells have thousand foot draws, right? So people would be like, all right, well, that's, you know, you got 99.9% of the, of the pipe left. Or is it, no, no, no. We're losing a foot per year and most of our wells are only designed to be like, you know, 40 feet under the water table. So we're actually, we're going to start losing a significant portion of the wells or we're on a very short leash here if we don't do something effectively. What, what's that perspective?
Well, part of, part of the issue is studying the aquifers themselves. And we basically have three or four tiers of aquifers in, in the Treasure Valley. And, and an aquifer, most people think about it, it's just like a bathtub or a basin. Aquifers can be like fingers. They can be, we have to study what they really are because you could go get a, get a water, drill a well here and get water at 50 feet, go 20 feet to the left or right and drill and you wouldn't hit water for a hundred feet. So we need to understand, and that's why we're doing this aquifer recharge study, starting with Hubbard Lake. And when I was in the legislature, we, we mean the legislature authorized the study of all the aquifers in, in, in the state of Idaho. For this very purpose, we're talking about the Snake River Plain Aquifer, Treasure Valley Aquifer, and they have some in all over the state. So that we would understand our aquifers better. That aquifer study for Treasure Valley is at a one square mile, very gross, a large scale. What we're trying to do is refine that. We're studying the square mile around Hubbard Lake to see not only where that water is going, but the kind of underground geology. The county has hired an individual to do that refinement of that study. And we're going to focus on some other areas. Like I said, the Murgertio Park area is where some of the water wells are going dry. We're going to try to study that aquifer area as well so that New York Canal goes right near that as well. See if we can actually get some floodwater to recharge that aquifer. Those are the kinds of things we need to be thinking about is water is available when it's available. And if we can store it, use it more effectively, use it as it is available. That's what we're trying to study is figure out ways that we can do that.
Gotcha. I was speaking with Representative Dan Hurtog, excuse me, Senator Dan Hurtog. Senator, right?
Senator.
Senator. Yeah. Man, I always bosh this. My apologies. I was speaking with her the other day and she was mentioning, she mentioned that she had seen a presentation from Idaho Power about cloud seeding and increasing precipitation in the area. And again, I won't hold you to this because obviously you don't work for Idaho Power and, you know, you may not know the details, but is there a conversation about how to increase precipitation in the area, considering we only get about 12 inches of moisture a year? Is, is there an idea of, okay, well, we can actually push that to like 16 inches or 18 inches of moisture per year?
Actually, I, I was a division administrator at the Department of Idaho Department of Agriculture and cloud seeding was in my division. So I do a little bit about it.
Okay, here we go.
Not, not a lot about it.
I will hold you 100% to everything you say right now.
But Idaho Power is one of the primary cloud seeding operations in the state. You have to get, you have to get a permit from Idaho to do that. So it is monitored. But yes, cloud seeding is a very effective way to increase moisture, taking moisture out of the clouds that's there and getting it onto the ground. And you can go on the Department of Agriculture and Idaho Power websites and they show, because they've done this for not just a few years, but a like a number of years, 20 or 30 years, they've done cloud seeding and it has been very effective in terms of increasing the, taking water out of the, out of the clouds.
Gotcha. And is that, is that something that is used by municipalities? Like so say Ada County or, you know, Ada County says, hey, look, we, we are having this issue with precipitation or we're having whatever. Is there, is there a way that the, the county engages in this or is it predominantly just, you know, other larger bodies like Idaho Power?
Well, I, I think you indicated that you have a podcast of visiting with someone regarding the Snake River Plain Aquifer.
Yes, yes. Attorney, Attorney Budge, who was representing the, a large group of the pump farmers.
Because that's, that's another whole, and I, I had some dialogue on that, but it's another whole podcast. Water rights, et cetera, because just, just because you have, just because water goes by your house, you have to, a water right is the right to, the waters are all owned by the state of Idaho. You can have a water right, which is the right to use the water, but not, you don't own it. So all of that is in relation to the question you just asked. Just because that water goes by your house or falls on your property doesn't mean you have a right to use it in a commercial way or for irrigation purposes or for whatever other purposes. It's all governed by Idaho water law. Again, it's a long, a long dissertation and a long podcast, but water law and the Department, Idaho Department of Water Resources and the Water Board actually governs the, not only the use of the water, but getting a water right, how you use it. And Idaho Power, as an example, has a right to use the water for power production. They can't use it for agriculture and they can't use it for any other industrial purpose. They have a right to use it for power production. A falling water right, they have a right to use it for power production. Just like an industrial usage can't use it for irrigation.
Sure.
If you have a, a piece of property and you have a water right to irrigate, you can't start using it for irrigation purposes. Unless you go through the Department of Water Resources and, and get a permit to change the, the permitted use.
Man, it's complex. It's a, that's a, yeah, this is a, this is a longer conversation, obviously. And again, I am trying to get a representative from Idaho Power to come on, chat about it. It would be, I really want to know. And I know a lot of people are concerned about, hey, look, if, if this is a program going on, you know, cloud seeding, which again, it is, nobody's denying it. What, what are the details, right? Like what, I know a lot of people are concerned about aerosol, aerosol mechanisms, right? Like, you know, herbicides, even, even just for general agriculture, people, people get very concerned about what's getting sprayed.
What, what is used for that cloud seeding and then what is in the water that comes down from? Yes, that, those are all very valid questions, which I do not know the answer to.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay. So what can Ada County do, right? So we have the individual level. We have essentially development in the community level. And then we have the larger kind of like county wide level, which is, you know, studies and, and recharging. So on an individual level, obviously water, water preservation is an important thing, right? Understanding the, I had this great conversation with a, gosh, his name was Scott. He worked for, he worked for the builder that, that built my house and he, he was so intent on trying to help me understand. He's like, listen, Matt, listen to me. Get fertilizer, don't water your lawn for 45 minutes. It's like, what do you mean? He's like, listen, you don't need to water it like you may have watered it in your previous state. Just get some good fertilizer and fertilize the water. You don't need to water it like crazy. Like people move here and water like crazy because they think their grass is brown because it's underwater. And he said predominantly in this area, it's not lack of water, it's lack of food, right? Of nutrients. That's right. So from an individual level, we understand, you know, water conservation with showerheads and, and you know, not wasting when you're washing dishes and things like that. And a lot of appliances people buy these days are pretty water conscious. But from an individual level, from, from a landscaping standpoint, you can save a lot of water if you just increase fertilizer or you, you use, you know, just be more conscious about nutrients and the, and the larger, larger systems that, that govern landscaping. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And, and not only that, but what kind of plants you plant, even grass that you plant. Kentucky bluegrass is very water intensive, but we have grasses that are very good grasses that are water tolerant, that don't take nearly as much water as, as Kentucky bluegrass. So those are the kinds of things that individuals can, can do to help preserve water. And it's actually helpful to you. So you don't have to water so much either.
Yeah.
And so as an individual, it helps your, not only your bill, your water bill, but just, just the activity you have to do on your, in your yard. But another thing that we're doing, that we started doing is having what we call water summits, where we call all the players together because each, as you've, as you're delving into the water, you'll know a water issue in Idaho. Where we call all the players together because each, as you've, as you're delving into the water, you'll know, water issue in Idaho. You'll know that each, each area has their own silo, as it were. They do their thing where they are, what they're doing, and they do it very well for the most part, very, very well on what they do. But it's cross pollinating, what we do that relates to what you do. And, and so we're, we've been having water summits since I've been commissioner. We're having another one on the ninth of October. So anybody can come, it's a public meeting, ninth of October in, in our Barber Park Events Facility. So people can come and, and listen.
And this is a, this is a collection of different commissioners from different counties or is it a collection of different developers?
It's government developers and we're having a report. This, this one, we're focusing on collecting of data and coordinating data. We worked with a, University of Idaho and Boise State University, trying to create a database. So that all this information that I'm talking about is in one spot. So that people can actually access it, whether it's a developer, whether it's an individual citizen, whomever can actually see where water is and zero in on it. The University of Idaho Water Center is focusing on this as well, creating, which we're helping them do. We mean in Ada County, because it's in, because it is here in, in Ada County. And so the Director of that Water Center, Kendra Kaiser is going to get, be giving a report on, she had a National Science Foundation grant for this year. To do the very thing we're talking about, created a database and a data collection area so that everybody can access it. So we're, we're, we're trying, we meaning the county.
Sure.
Cause we don't, we don't own any, well, we own very limited water rights. But our objective is to help people understand how they can use water better. And so again, facilitate, government's responsibility is to help individuals do what they need to do and do them better. Not do them themselves, meaning do, have government do it. So that's what we're trying to do is create, help energize. I, I also worked in the Reagan administration on a private sector initiative, which Reagan's idea was to actually empower, have the government be the catalyst to help businesses come together in a way that they could help each other. And then just step back and that's why I worked on a private sector initiative and got the businesses together, created the catalyst, and then we just stepped back. It's a government program that actually went out of existence.
Look at that.
And so that's what we're trying to do here in Ada County in terms of water is to energize the people to work together in a way that they might not have done in the past, that will help us all do what we all want to do. And that's use our water more effectively and more efficiently.
Gotcha. And one, one last question and coming back to the, the development level. Because obviously the commissioners can say, okay, this is a good, well-planned development or this is less well-planned development. Is the level and robust nature of the water system that the Dry Creek Ranch development engaged in, is that, is that like the standard for Ada County now? Or is that more of, okay, this developer went above and beyond and we can't require everybody do this, but they did a good job with it.
Again, we're trying to empower people and we have the Spring Rock Development out in South Ada County that we're trying to encourage them to do the similar kinds of things. And of course, we don't, developers are protective of their, of their, what they do and how they do it. Because of course, if a, a business is interested in what they do. So we're not trying to, to impinge on people's individuality that they can do themselves and that they have proprietary information on. But these are ideas that we want to put out there in the public that are ideas that we can all use individually to, to improve our water.
Gotcha.
You see, quality and usage.
Gotcha. Commissioner, we've talked about a lot of things. Is there, and again, this is kind of what I asked you at the last time, last time we spoke and you mentioned water. Is there anything we've missed today on this or is there anything that's going to lead into a future conversation?
Oh, as we talked about, there are lots of things that lead into future conversations. One of the things that, that is the whole water system in terms of water rights. If my individual domestic well goes dry, what do I do about it? If I have a water right? All of those questions are ones that we could dig into on a, on a podcast as well. Or you could get somebody else from Department of Water Resources or Idaho Power, all the, all the component parts. Some of the water, Treasure Valley Water Users, the New York Canal Company, the District 63 Board of Control. Those all have their own specialized silos that they do in terms of water, what they do with water, how they deliver it, Bureau of Reclamation. Those are all component parts that fit together in terms of how we mute, one, store our water and then how we use our water that we've stored.
Man, it's so complex. It's just, I was telling somebody just yesterday, you know, I was out celebrating Fourth of July. They were really thankful for the, for the different shows I was doing on different aspects of the community. And, and I was telling, it's like, it's so mind boggling complex, even just this conversation about water. And, and we so dearly depend on people making the right decisions, right? This will affect my kids and my grandchildren, assuming that they're still here and living in this area. Like these are really, really important things and they are complex. And the average citizen, I just don't think has access in general to this information. They wouldn't even know where to look, right? So again, I, I so appreciate you coming in and sharing this information in a, in an awesome way so that people can grab ahold of it. And hopefully, you know, do whatever research and where can people find the water studies you said on the Ada County website?
It's going on the Ada County, Ada County website. And there's this section there on water.
Gotcha.
That you can just click on that and it has all these studies that we're, that we're collecting. And I, again, we're eventually, Kendra will be reporting on this at our November nine, our October ninth meeting. On what's, what this year's study has been in terms of the collection, how, how we collected out together through University of Idaho Water Center. And, and that's what we would like. And we found out as we were, just as an aside, we found out as we were doing this, trying to find out. Cause the state of Idaho spent 20 years adjudicating water. In other words, evaluating what water rights people had, where they were registering, making sure they were all up, up to speed in terms of who owned what were right, water right and where. All of that data is not, is not in one collection place, so that you can actually go and look at it. University of Idaho is trying to put that all together. That's part of what Kendra's trying to do as well. So that people can go in, no matter where they are in Idaho and find out what the adjudication process is brought forward. Through individual law firms, individual citizens, the state of Idaho water adjudication process.
Gotcha.
That's just one, one thing that we're trying to do in terms of get the data in a place where the citizens, developers, users of water in Idaho have a place that they can go as a resource.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, again, thank you for taking the time today. Thank you for coming in. Happy Fourth of July. What a time.
To you as well, and thank you for reaching out and making information available to people. Cause absent information, we, we make not as good a decisions as we do with, we have better information, so.
Well, next time you come in, let's talk property taxes.
Good idea, because there's another thing that people need to understand better than they do.
Right. Excellent. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.